Also in your packets, you should have received a copy of the minutes from the last council meeting. Are there any corrections to any of these minutes? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the minutes.
So moved.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The minutes have been approved. Thank you. Recognition of visitors, Mr. Bogowski.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have several dignitaries with us tonight. We're joined by Mr. Sid Conklin, the Presiding Commissioner of Randolph County, Mr. Austin Kaiser, the Western District Commissioner of Randolph County, Sheriff Andy Boggs, and the Executive Director of the North Missouri Drug Task Force, Jason Ward. So welcome to all of them.
Yeah, welcome, welcome, everybody, and it's great to see a good crowd here tonight. So it looks like we've got some pretty special events and presentations we'll get to here shortly. If there is anyone here that would like to speak to the council, please come up, grab a green card from Shannon the Clerk, fill it out with your name and address, and we will call you up a little bit later on in the meeting to address the council. You will have four minutes to do that at that time, but that will be towards the end of the meeting. Okay, communications requests and informational items. Looks like we have a pretty special presentation from Chief Bobby Calvert. Are you ready?
Sure.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Manager, for allowing us to be here this evening. Thank you to county officials, family, friends, and recipients. As you know, we're here this evening to give out some life-saving commendations. So each officer, after we're finished, will come up, they'll receive their commendation. We wrote a brief synopsis of what the events of that evening, so each of them will be getting an accommodation and a letter and a plaque. On May 25th, 2025, at 1:35 a.m., Mobley Joint Communications dispatched emergency services to North 63 Highway for a vehicle that was upside down, on fire, and a person was trapped inside. It was later learned that North Missouri Drug Task Force detective was first on scene and observed the vehicle on fire. The detective began to attempt to remove the subject on his own without any protective equipment. Mobley Police Department Corporal Russ Unti and Randolph County Deputy Trace Johnson arrived on scene and assisted with removing the person from the burning vehicle. They were able to work together to remove the trapped subject. These law enforcement officers acted without hesitation in due regard to their own personal safety, saving the subject's life. Without the intervention, these law enforcement officers would have died. After the subject was removed from the vehicle, he received medical attention from the Randolph County Ambulance District, and the fire was extinguished by the Mobley Fire Department. These officers exemplified and embodied the professional, proactive policing and dedication to duty that Randolph County law enforcement strives each day to provide to the citizens of Mobley and Randolph County. We are proud to present the life-saving commendations to Corporal Unti and Deputy Johnson. To protect the identity of the detective, his commendation will be presented at a later time. Respectfully, Bobby Calvert, Mobley Police Chief, Andy Boggs, Randolph County Sheriff, and Director Jason Ward, North Missouri Drug Task Force. Thank you, gentlemen. Two come on up, please. So I just kind of want to... So what we've done in the past, the ones that we've done for the city of Mobley, we'll give them the commendation, certification, and a letter explaining what happened on that evening, so they can put those together.
you very much for your dedication to keeping our community safer. I can tell you, it is such a warming feeling to see all of our law enforcement officers working together and working as one team. It's something that's not always been that way in the past, and I... It's heartwarming to see that, that is taking place now. So thank everyone involved, and thank you for the leaders that have put good teams in place. We appreciate that very much. Okay, next on the list, we have a proclamation. This is called the Good Neighbor Week Proclamation. The city of Mobley recognizes Good Neighbor Week as a time to celebrate kindness, cooperation, and community spirit. We encourage all residents to strengthen friendships, lend a helping hand, show appreciation for those who make our neighborhoods a better place to live. By fostering respect and connection, we honor the values that build a stronger, more welcoming community. So I, Brandon L. Lucas, Mayor of the city of Mobley, Missouri, do hereby proclaim September 28th to October 4th as Missouri Good Neighbor Week in Mobley, Missouri. So, Mr. City Manager, would you join me down for a photo? Request to hold the 2025 Cowboys for Christmas Parade on November 1st, 2025.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is the annual Cowboys for Christmas Parade. It was presented at work session last meeting and was recommended by staff to be approved, and it was moved forward to this meeting by the council. Mr. Kitchen is here with us tonight in case there are any additional questions.
Thank you. Counsel, have any additional questions? Have a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It has been approved. Number five, a request from the Mobley VFW Post 2654 to hold the 2025 Veterans Day Parade on November 8th, 2025.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we received this request from the VFW Post about the Veterans Day Parade. It was reviewed by staff and brought forward to the council at work session last meeting, and then moved forward to this meeting for final approval.
Thank you. Any additional questions? We have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? It has been approved. Thank you. Number six, receipt of bids for dead tree removal at Oakland Cemetery. Looks like we received two bids from KNOT Tree Service for $10,300 and H&amp;L Tree Service, Larry Beal, for $3,500. We need to mark those as received, so entertain a motion for that.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The bids have been received. Thank you. As with every other week, or most weeks, we do have a consent agenda this evening. Looks like items seven through... Seven through nine, actually. Is there any item that the council would like to have removed for separate consideration or discussion? Hearing none. Do I hear... Do I have a motion for the reading of the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First and only reading, please.
Bill number R-1889, a resolution accepting the bid and authorizing contracting with Larry Beal Tree Services for removal of a tree at Oakland Cemetery. Bill number R-1890, a resolution accepting the proposal and authorizing contracting with Hutchinson Recreation &amp; Design for a pavilion at Fox Park. And bill number R-1891, a resolution authorizing the sale of surplus city property by auction on Purple Wave.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Tonight's consent agenda has been approved. Moving on to ordinances and resolutions. Number 10, an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, I have an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for funding of placer.ai services with the Mobley Chamber of Commerce, the Mobley Area Economic Development Corporation, and Randolph County. Assets be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperation agreement for funding of placer.ai services with the Mobley Chamber of Commerce Incorporated, the Mobley Area Economic Development Corporation, and Randolph County.
Any questions or discussion from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperation agreement for funding of placer.ai services with the Mobley Chamber of Commerce Incorporated, the Mobley Area Economic Development Corporation, and Randolph County.
Thank you. Last chance, any further questions or discussion? Hearing none. Do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
The ordinance has been approved. Number 11, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance amending section 10-179 of the city code relating to occupancy permits. Can I ask that it be read twice for consideration?
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance amending section 10-179 of the city code relating to occupancy permits.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Second reading, please.
An ordinance amending section 10-179 of the city code relating to occupancy permits.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and an ordinance. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 12, an ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have an ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning application of Tony Stewart for property located at 706 and 708 Coates Street. I now ask that it be read twice for consideration of passage.
We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning application of Tony Stewart for property located at 706 and 708 Coates Street.
Any questions or discussion from council? Second reading, please.
An ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning application of Tony Stewart for property located at 706 and 708 Coates Street.
Thank you. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 13, an ordinance.
Mayor, I have an ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning application of Hannah Enterprises LLC for property located at 209 Jefferson Avenue. I ask that it be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning application of Hannah Enterprises LLC for property located at 209 Jefferson Avenue.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Second reading, please.
An ordinance adopting the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve the rezoning application of Hannah Enterprises LLC for property located at 209 Jefferson Avenue.
Thank you. Any further questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance?
So moved.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 14, an ordinance.
Yes, Mayor, I have an ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for alleyway repaving with St. Pius the Tenth Church. I ask that this be read twice for consideration.
Thank you. We have a... A motion for the reading of the ordinance. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for alleyway repaving with St. Pius the Tenth Church.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none. Second reading.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for alleyway repaving with St. Pius the Tenth Church.
Thank you. Last chance, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First reading, please.
An ordinance approving a cooperative agreement for alleyway repaving with St. Pius the Tenth Church.
Thank you. Last chance, any questions or discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion for the approval of the ordinance.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
Thank you. The ordinance has been adopted. Number 15, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution authorizing and accepting a change order with J.T. Holman General Contracting and Excavation LLC for the residential structures demolition contract, and I ask that it be read once for consideration.
Thank you. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First and only reading, please.
A resolution authorizing and accepting a change order with J.T. Holman General Contracting and Excavation LLC for the residential structures demolition contract.
Thank you. Any questions from council? No? Do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution has been approved. Number 16, a resolution.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have a resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri, to pay expenses due between September 5th of 2025 and September 17th of 2025 in the amount of $1,282,614.25. I ask that it be read once for consideration of passage.
Thank you, sir. We have a motion for the reading of the resolution. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? First and only reading, please.
A resolution appropriating money out of the treasury of the city of Mobley, Missouri, to pay expenses due between September 5th, 2025, and September 17th, 2025 in the amount of $1,282,614.25.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion from council? Okay. I hereby certify that there's sufficient money standing to the credit of the city of Mobley, Missouri, unappropriated in the funds identified in this resolution to meet the requirements of this resolution. City Treasurer Allison Boyd, do we have a motion for the approval of the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and seconded. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution has passed. That does it for ordinances and resolutions for this evening. Moving on to department head official reports. Are there... Each week we ask... Or each month, we ask the department heads to put together a report that kind of lets the council know what's going on in their department and some of the things that are happening in their world, just to kind of keep us up to date. This is a chance for council to ask any questions if there was anything they didn't understand on the reports. Does anybody have any questions? No? No question, no takers. I did have one question regarding the demos, the teardowns. Is there any particular reason why we can't do our own water turnoffs, shut-offs, and sewer shut-offs? That list that you put together in your report, it listed out, you know, some of the asbestos costs, some of the landfill costs, and that was really eye-opening to see, you know, because we really hadn't seen the breakdown, and so that was pretty valuable to see that. But I saw that extra expense in there, and I thought, is that something that we can do on our own or can't do on our own?
Utilities just doesn't have them... They've been busy with other things and hadn't... Didn't have the manpower to get around to that, so that's why we had to contract that out.
Okay. Would it... In a scenario where, in a perfect world, where we were fully staffed, would that be something that we would try to tackle, or would it just be something we would always outsource? It's not a lot of money, but, you know, you do 10 or 15 of them, it adds up a little bit.
I would be... Have to actually work with the utilities department. I want to speak for them on their availability on that, so I mean...
Okay. All right. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm sorry, Sean, go ahead.
Answer, short answer is yes, we could if we were fully staffed or had additional staff. As you know, we stay pretty busy with breaks, repairs, things like that, so, yeah, Tom and I have been in discussion off and on over the last few months, I would say, on how to do this best, and there's no great answer at this moment.
Sure, sure. Okay. Just something I happen to think of is kind of looking at a profit-loss type scenario and looking at some of those expenses. Some of those houses to tear down can get relatively expensive when you start adding asbestos and all that into it. So just some things that... The way you broke it down, that was very appreciative because it gave us the real big picture, so we appreciate that very much. A couple of other items, and you speak on it if you would like, you know, the Kiwanis Park, we just had the Kiwanis Park opening. Huge turnout for that, for that ribbon cutting. If you haven't been out to see that, that is such a neat park. A lot of vision went into that with Mr. Bach and his staff. Anything you'd like to speak to that, or... I'm kind of putting you on the spot.
It took a lot of people and organizations to pull it off. It's all teamwork, but we're seeing a lot of activity, just, you know, the neighbors and people across the community, so, you know, one instance, the morning after at 9:30 in the morning, there were about 30 people at the playground and school was in session. So that tells you the support that's out there, but there's a lot of picnics in the works also that'll lend us out to some events. So the health department's looking at a pop-up park coming up, and so folks should watch Facebook for that. But the Kiwanis Club is looking at an event. Randolph County Developmental Disabilities Services is looking at an event. So there's at least three events coming up within the next month or so.
It's neat. I had somebody that was out there just driving around checking it out send me a picture, and it was, there was no place to park. Like, there was that many people out there, there's no place to park, so that was really neat to see, and people are really buying into it, so that's good work with that. This past weekend, we had Junk Junction, had a lot of people in town. I don't think we have anybody here to speak to that right now, but it looks like they had a pretty good turnout based on everything, so that was neat to see. A lot of people come into our community. And just department head-wise, I'm around the community a lot, in a lot of places and a lot of businesses, and I just... I'm hearing a lot of compliments, you know, and it's nothing specific, but just, you know, a lot of compliments about how things are going in the city, you know, they're kind of seeing the, hey, we're trying to communicate a little bit better with you. They're seeing a lot of the projects that are happening and being explained what the projects are, so we're just hearing a lot of that from individuals in the community. So it just makes you feel good when they come and tell you that, because we're just like you guys are. We're not always giving the best, you know, somebody could be biting our head off, but sometimes they do come with good information, and so I wanted to pass that along, you know, just to all of the department heads that you're doing a good job and keep up the good work. We appreciate it very much. I think that's... I think that's all I've got as far as department heads and department head reports. Under the subheading, anything else to come before the council? Number 18, consideration of a reappointment to the Board of Adjustment.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we discussed this at work session last time, but Melissa Anderson's term on the Board of Adjustment has expired, and she did apply to be reappointed, so the council moved that forward to this meeting.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion for the approval of the reappointment of Melissa Anderson?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? We will reappoint Ms. Anderson to the Board of Adjustment. Number 19, consideration of an appointment to the Electrical Board.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, at last work session, it was discussed how the representative from Ameren has changed over to Mr. Tony Mullen, so council moved that forward to have him fill that Ameren seat on the Electrical Board.
Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion for the approval of appointment of Mr. Mullen?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Mr. Tony Mullen will be our representative on the Electrical Board. Number 20, public comments. So is there anyone here that would like to address the council? Oh, man. Nobody. All right. Maybe next week. What was that? What was that from the crowd? Yet, Commissioner, he never behaves, that's a problem. Okay, since we have no public comments, that is it for the council meeting, so I'll consider a motion to adjourn to a work session followed by closed session to discuss the status of real estate and negotiated contract matters.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Lucas?
Yes.
Kimmons?
Yes.
McEwen?
Yes.
Graff?
Yes.
Scubick?
Yes.
All right, thank you. We are adjourned from council meeting. We will move directly into work session. All right, number one, on work session, an ordinance changing the street name of East Outer Road to Distribution Drive from Highway 24 North to the Omar N. Bradley Airport.
Mr. Thompson's going to jump in and kind of run you through the process from here on out.
Very good. It looks familiar because you already passed a resolution authorizing this, but that resolution authorized us to give notice to the public of the proposed change, and
Very good.
It looks familiar because you already passed a resolution authorizing this, but that resolution authorized us to give notice to the public of the proposed change, and so that's been done, and we received no comments, objections to it. So now we have to pass an ordinance authorizing the name change, so that's what will come before the council next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Any questions regarding the road name change? Nope. Any objections to moving that forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move that one forward. Number two, discussion of hiring an on-call consultant for planning and zoning support.
So in the past, we've had, you know, book and Willis or any of them or other consultants that have worked with us on our comprehensive plan or zoning updates, something like that. We've always had someone on call for that. We haven't had that in some time, and more and more there's getting to be questions where, need something, where we need direct feedback on that rather than trying to call a consultant and make arrangements to have a, an agreement for a question or two. It'd be good, and I, I've talked to Mike about this for some time, so this would be the same consultant that we use, Rich Kaplan, for our housing study that we did in '17, and he also has a connection with Gould &amp; Evans, the consultants there, so. And we did look at some other firms. I tried to evaluate other consulting firms and who they had available, and these, this program we selected would be like a, on an hourly basis, not to exceed $5,000, and one year term as a trial basis, and if it's going well, we can look to evaluate further.
I think that sounds fair. When was the, when was the last time we had a P&amp;Z consultant? It's been a while?
It's probably been, Victor Burks was probably the last one we had for a minute. It's been probably six or seven years, you know. Usually there's, you know, a few people on staff that have a fair amount of planning background and, and kind of bouncing back and forth, and so it's, we get some feedback, but I really think we've got some things that are coming up that we need some of that outside assurance or backup with.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Sander? Any objection to moving the request forward to the next council meeting? Okay, we will move this one forward. Number three, donation of properties located at 805 and 809 Bond Street to the city of Moberly.
So these two properties, I can see in the picture, there, there's a small house on 809, and, and the lot next to 805 is vacant. The owner has passed, and so the manager of the estate, they just, you know, house not too great a shape, they don't have, there's not enough funds in there to handle it, and so it's one of those things where we feel like that, you know, we can get that into the hands and maybe put it on the market for development purposes, you know, where if somebody builds on one, tears the house down, develops the other one, something like that. It's going to wind up in our hands anyhow, so.
Right.
They're willing to pay all the back taxes and cost on it, and I, I think we can move it and get something done with it there in that area.
Yeah, very good. Any questions regarding this, number three? Nope. Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward to the next council meeting. Number four, report of the Director of Community Development for demolition charges for 1006 Concanon Street.
As you were kind of talking about there earlier, this is just kind of a wrap-up of all the charges that are assessed on that and putting it on, you see, $10,000, and my screen's kind of smoking. I don't know, you should have a sheet there in front of you, $10,000.
$10,086.
Yeah. $86, so that's the total, and you can see the breakout there. Wasn't too bad on asbestos on that one. Some of the other ones have gotten pretty significant, but still, it's a fair amount of cost to give.
Yeah, it's up quick, doesn't it? But the, and, and understand this correctly, this is being billed to the, to the owner, correct?
All of the ones that are billed to the owners, the ones that, you know, after 30 days, if they haven't made payment within 30 days, and we comply with a special tax bill.
Okay.
Yeah, this will come to you as a special tax bill within ordinance, placing a lien on the property.
Okay. Any questions from anyone on council? Nope. Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward. Number five, report of the Director of Community Development for demolition charges for 613 Adams Avenue.
And that one is the 9,358.79, that would also be a, coming as a special tax bill as well.
Any questions for Tom on this one? Any objections to moving this one forward? Okay, we will move this one forward as well. Number six, Fox Park Playground replacement equipment. Mr. Bach?
So this was spurred a few months ago by some vandalism at the park, but also at the same time, we had the, the company come in and assess it. There were a number of things, just given the, the three-decade age of the, the playground that were needing addressed. So the coating on a lot of the platforms is giving way. Some of the plastic tube material is cracking in, in two instances. Two of the pieces of equipment, part of what took so long is, two of the pieces of equipment